Okay, next, we would like to call the District Attorney's Office.
I said theater.
Yeah.
Uh, training. Training technology and special projects. Goodness. Of course, I dig it up at 4:30. It'll leave Penn State. I'm a little foggy, but.
Who's here with a talk?
Me. You can move it.
This is yours?
No.
I came in second. I didn't get knocked out.
Well, good morning, Mr. District Attorney and those who were accompanying you. Thank you for coming in and if you may state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, my name is Seth Williams and I have the honor of serving the city that we love as the 24th District Attorney. Mr. Chairman, I am joined today by, to my left, my first assistant, Mr. George Mosey, and to my right, your left, Jody Lobel, who serves as our deputy for training, technology, and special projects. I also have many other members of our office that are here. Hopefully, if I can't answer some of your questions, hopefully, they'll be able to support me and get you the answers that you need. I'd like to begin by just stating for the record how thankful I am for the working relationship that we have with all of council, specifically Council President Clark. And this budget process this year has been a significant change and improvement, I believe, over the past. I want to thank Council President Clark and his budget staff. I also want to thank Mayor Kenny and his staff, specifically Rob DeBeau, Anna Adams, and Brian Abernathy. It's been a breath of fresh air, working with them, trying to address the needs of public safety in our city and the needs of the district attorney, and I look forward to working with them and moving forward together as we try to protect our city and keep our city safe. So I just want to start off by saying that. I appreciate that. I know all of you very well and respect all of you, and we meet and talk all throughout the year, so it's an honor for me to be here on behalf of the 600 men and women at the District Attorney's Office to talk about our office and our concern, our unified need, all of us, to keep our city as safe as possible. I think it's appropriate.
It's nice to see a district attorney who's out there in the streets, you know, with not only the community, but the folks who have been elected by the community and, you know, seeing firsthand, you know, what we're faced with on a day-to-day basis, so.
Well, thank you, Councilman. You know, I grew up in Cobb's Creek and I love being the DA, but I'm trying just to be the best steward of the office that I can be for however long I have the ability to serve as a district attorney, so I thank you for saying that. I think it's appropriate to begin. My very good friend and Councilman Green began one of his questions of Justice, I'm sorry, Judge Sheila Wood Skipper, I feel I gave her a promotion by now, but he started talking about the MacArthur Grant. I think it's appropriate in many ways for us to begin. I think our city receiving the MacArthur Grant is one of the greatest recognitions and demonstrations of the public safety, the criminal justice partners in Philadelphia work together, and how we're committed to public safety and how we're committed to reforms in the criminal justice system. The amount of money that we receive through the MacArthur Grant itself is almost a rounding error if you look at the city's entire budget, but the fact that we were selected after a very rigorous process and that they believe that all of the partners, the police, the courts, the public defender, the prison commissioner, all of us are committed to reducing our prison population by approximately 34 percent, doing all that we can to reform the criminal justice system, I think really is a feather in the cap of the city of Philadelphia. I just want to start by bringing that to everyone's attention. But again, criminal justice reform, this is a term we hear of a lot lately. Council President Clark has prioritized it, and Mayor Kenny focused on it well before he became mayor. We hear President Obama and Speaker Paul Ryan and many others discuss the need for reform. Criminal justice reform is not and should not be a scary concept. It does not, nor should it mean letting offenders out of prison early for the sake of emptying our prisons. It does not mean giving breaks to sex offenders, murderers, or those who terrorize our communities with illegal firearms. It does not mean throwing taxpayer money at programs that demonstrate no evidence of reducing recidivism. Criminal justice reform is something more profound. The term acknowledges that our system has flaws and that, working together, we can make it better. When the system is improved, all of those people who are involved in it benefit. For victims, an improved system means more efficiency, fewer delays, and a greater likelihood that their perpetrators will be held accountable. For less violent offenders, it means the greater likelihood of removing barriers to being meaningfully employed. For ex-offenders generally, it means more and better programs designed to address their criminogenic needs, so they will be both held accountable for their conduct and presented with an opportunity to get better and ultimately do better. For taxpayers, it means a better use of taxpayer dollars, because if done right, criminal justice reform will reduce recidivism. Recidivism reduction means less crime, fewer victims, robust reentry, and ultimately, a better criminal justice system. It wasn't that long ago that I spoke with council during my first budget testimony about the need for reform. I held this book up that day, "Smart on Crime" by California's Attorney General Kamala Harris. Seven years ago, some of these concepts seemed out of the mainstream. Wouldn't our small amounts of marijuana program give too much of a break to pot smokers and lead to more illegal drugs on our streets? How could we have diversionary programs like The Choice Is Yours in which potential felons could be diverted into programming? Wouldn't resolving many of our misdemeanor cases by offering specialized and tailored diversion just send a message that we aren't taking crime seriously enough? Is establishing an entire separate pre-trial division from which all of our diversionary programs would be overseen the best use of our limited resources? Why should, why would the district attorney be discussing second chances for our nonviolent offenders? We've come a long way. People don't ask those questions anymore. Instead, we are all talking about further reforms. But a portion of criminal justice reform only tells part of the story, if only it were that simple, for at the same time, we are, unlike in years past, grappling with a significant uptick in gun violence. People are beginning to feel less safe and less secure on our streets. And we're also dealing with the scourge of an opioid epidemic. Philadelphians are dying at an alarming rate from heroin, prescription drugs, and other opioid overdoses. Mr. Chairman, in 2014, there were 655 drug-related overdose deaths in Philadelphia. Nearly 350 involved heroin. How frightening that the cycle for which can and often does start from addiction to prescription pain medication. Think about all we have to do. Contain gun violence, contain our heroin epidemic, continue to hold our most violent offenders accountable, make people feel safe in their homes and communities, encourage more second chances, and help align the city's infrastructure so that programs for those offenders with criminogenic needs are good, effective, and available. That's for all of us to do, this body, my office, and each of the entities coming before you today in budget hearings. So that we know where we need to go, let's talk briefly about what we have been able to do. Diverting more offenders out of the criminal justice system, nearly 40 percent of our misdemeanor cases are diverted out of the criminal justice system, which is a tremendous increase since 2010. Diverting these cases has not negatively affected public safety. Within one year of completing diversionary program, fewer than 14 percent of those individuals were rearrested. Within three years, fewer than 25 percent of these individuals were rearrested. Consider that the rearrest rate for those released from state prison is 63 percent. Resolve cases faster. Earlier, I know Councilman Dom asked a question about case resolution. During the same time period, misdemeanors are disposed of much faster, from more than seven months to less than four and a half months. We charge fewer people with crimes now. In 2010, we charged 26,467 misdemeanor cases. In 2015, we charged 18,096, a decrease of almost a third. At the same time, fewer cases are withdrawn. We have had to withdraw 14 percent fewer misdemeanor cases. We are also now holding more cases for court. We're holding about 72 percent of our felonies for court in 2015 in comparison to 63 percent in 2010. Nearly 20 percent of our felony cases are disposed of well before trial through our Smart Room program that you heard of earlier. Had these cases proceeded to trial without early disposition afforded by the Smart Rooms, they might still be listed on court dockets. It takes a long time for a case resolved by trial. Cases are continued for various reasons, yet each listing, the defendant is brought to court if incarcerated, victims and witnesses are subpoenaed to appear, police officers must attend court, drugs and guns are tested by our criminalistics experts, and money is expended to list cases and occupy court time. Smart Rooms, Mr. Chairman, are efficient in resolving cases early without the need for long trial dates and attendant expenses. Reducing recidivism by successfully diverting nonviolent drug dealers, The Choice Is Yours is a program that I tell people plagiarism is a bad thing in law school, plagiarism is a great thing as a DA, and I stole that idea from Kamala Harris when she was the DA of San Francisco. Of those who have entered our program, 67 or 88 percent had a graduation rate and only a 12 percent rearrest rate. Of those 25 who rejected our program, 17 or two-thirds have been convicted of a felony. 60 percent have a rearrest rate, five times worse than our graduates. Those graduates who have been rearrested spent 199 days in custody. Those who rejected the program and have been rearrested spent 3,417 days in custody. Therefore, we have shown a cost savings of at least $320,000. All this has allowed us to focus on our more serious and violent cases, and we have succeeded. Look at our conviction rate increase from 2010 to 2015. Homicide is up 9 percent, from 78 percent to 87 percent. Rape is up 9 percent, from 55 percent to 64 percent. Illegal gun possession is up 13 percent, from 52 percent to 65 percent. And, Mr. Chairman, we are saving the city money. Our AMP program saves the city annually about $3.5 million. The Choice Is Yours, $320,000. Bench warrant court, close to $100,000. Smart Rooms, the equivalent of 18 officers are on the street instead of in the courtroom, which is at least a savings of $900,000. As a result of our diversionary programs, over 1,000 drug cases were resolved without ever having to order an analysis from our chem lab, saving the city at least another $100,000. Just as important, this has reduced the burden on the labs in terms of work hours needed to process backlogs. We are thinking outside the box in our battle against heroin overdose. We're doing things that prosecutors have historically never done. With the funding from the Pennsylvania District Attorneys Association and Independence Blue Cross, we are assuming the major responsibility for our Drug Drop Box program. Commissioner Ross has been integral in establishing and helping us maintain the program. His staff at every police district has been unequivocally collaborative. Drug drop boxes are critical in our fight against prescription drug abuse. I saw, Mr. Chairman, you tweeted that this weekend about people being able to turn in drugs on Saturday. Our county detectives are collecting and transporting the collected drugs. I make this point to emphasize that we're doing so much more with every meaningful budgetary increase. To date, we've collected about 200 pounds of prescription medicines and things that were just brought out of people's homes and cabinets. We have our med return boxes at the 1st, the 15th, the 19th, the 22nd, 25th, and 35th police districts. Phase two will start very shortly. We'll be adding the 3rd, 5th, 6th, 7th, 12th, 14th, and 26th. With our colleagues at the District Attorneys Association, we secured $50,000 in funding from Blue Cross for the purchase also of naloxone kits, which the police will be using on our streets. Also, I want to thank Cavanta, which is a company in Conshohocken that has agreed to destroy of all these drugs that we're turning in. Proposed funding request. The proposed fiscal year 2017 general fund budget totals $36,295,718, which is an increase of $813,504 over fiscal year 2016 estimated obligation levels. This increase will generally allow us to maintain current staffing levels and cover salaries that have been covered by grants. The proposed budget includes $33,303,525 in Class 100, which is an $813,504 increase over fiscal year 16. Again, this funding will be mandated, unit increases, and maintain current staffing levels. We appreciate this increase. I can't state that enough. We appreciate the dialogue that we've had with the mayor's office and their recognition that our office needs more resources. I want to especially acknowledge Brian Abernathy for working with First Assistant George Mosey to ensure that money that we were losing from federal and state grants would not hurt us and that they were ensure that we would receive that $813,000. You might ask, why are we losing grant funding? State and federal governments generally do not award grant funds for more than two years. After that time period, they expect agencies to sustain grant-funded programs out of their current budgets. If our budget were merely adjusted for inflation from fiscal year '05, our budget would be $1 million higher than what it is in the proposed budget, and I've brought a chart to demonstrate that. Mr. Greg Rowe, who's the chief of my legislation and policy unit, will do his best Vanawite And so again, the police, prisons, and sheriff budgets are far higher than if their budgets were merely tracked for inflation. The police, $59 million higher, prisons $24 million higher, and the sheriff $2.4 million higher. Since 2009, the DA's offices had the lowest percentage budgetary increase, 12 percent, of any other public safety agency. The sheriff's budget has increased 32 percent, police 24 percent, fire 17 percent, prisons 17 percent. The average increase since 2009 for a criminal justice agency is 21 percent. What will we do with additional funding? Focus deterrence expansion. Our fight against gun violence, in collaboration and conjunction with our partners, especially the police, with approximately $275,000, we would have an additional two assistant DAs and two detectives to work on reducing gun violence in our city. Expungement. I know many of members of council want us to do as much as we can to help individuals get their records expunged, which is a step beyond just banning the box. Since we do not object to the vast majority of expungement petitions, we could review more petitions if we had more bodies. Approximately $175,000 would allow us to have two additional ADAs and one clerk reviewing these expungement petitions. More petitions being reviewed means more expungements will be granted faster. In this endeavor, we all agree the process has to be right. Equally important, funds for retaining staff. I understand that the budget is tight. I've been hearing that from council for the past seven years, and I understand, but the city has a significant number of priorities, including helping to adequately fund our schools, which is the greatest crime prevention tool. Assistant DAs leave the office not because they don't like their jobs, but because law firms typically pay a significant amount more than we can. We will never be able to match the salaries of the firms, but any increase so the best and brightest in my office can receive even a modest bump to keep up with the rising costs of everyday life will help us keep those who are committed, trained in our programs and philosophies, and know what it is to be smart on crime. Mr. Chairman and members of council, I'd also like to speak briefly about our Law Division, which is something most people don't even understand or think of when they think of and they watch Law and Order. I wanted to take a moment and recognize the great work of our Law Division, consisting of assistant district attorneys who often get the least recognition because their work is primarily to defend the convictions of our office. They are writers, researchers, and advocates before our appellate courts. They are bright, thoughtful, and inquisitive, and work very hard to ensure convictions are sustained. They help create appellate law, explain the nuances to the courts, and at the end of the day, ensure that our crime victims have a voice and advocate in our Superior, Commonwealth, Supreme, and federal courts. The institutional knowledge that these assistant district attorneys have is impressive and invaluable. Their knowledge of the law is not something that is learned overnight. It is a deep knowledge learned from years and years of research, writing, and other experience. They understand the most complicated areas of the law. They're able to use their commitment and intellectual skills to ensure that the guilty, such as murderers and rapists, remain behind bars. Many of these individuals could have ended up at big law firms making a lot of money, but they have stayed true to public service and their commitment to the city of Philadelphia. So, Mr. Chairman and members of council, we've come a long way in seven years, but we still have a very long way to go. I remain excited and committed to us finding the best practices from all over the world to help make Philadelphia the safest city for all of us to live, work, and play. With that, Mr. Chairman, in accord with the wishes of the President of Council, we've submitted an overview of our budget and lots of charts, and with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. You said, if I could make a request at these charts, if you could email them to the chair so we can get them out to all council.
Certainly.
Because I think you're, I mean, you make a compelling argument on the disparity in resources as far as the rate of return and, you know, what we're all trying to accomplish within the, you know, having your part in the criminal justice system. So with that being said, you know, I'm just sitting here listening to your testimony and looking at your charts, and you started off by acknowledging what a great recognition it is for Philadelphia to receive the MacArthur Grant and just the recognition of what we're trying to do, and it's just, you know, when, and I also recall when you first, you know, were elected into office and then assembled your team, and you campaigned and you are living by being smart on crime, and that is exactly what this recognition is about with the MacArthur, with the MacArthur Grant and putting together the criminal justice system in its totality for a longer-term approach to reduce, you know, our recidivism rate, our general population rate in our prisons, as well as increasing our diversionary programs, which it's been a priority of yours for a long time now. In your budget testimony, you had mentioned that you would like to improve some of the other diversionary program components. Could you maybe touch on that a little bit, because I think it all goes into play on what we're, you know, how we're all working together effectively?
Certainly, certainly, Mr. Chair. And again, the MacArthur Grant, I think embodies and personifies how well the Criminal Justice Advisory Board and all of the public safety agencies in Philadelphia work together. And yes, I ran in 2005 and 2009 on a platform of us being smart on crime, and a lot of people thought all of that was just rhetoric, all these numbers I was throwing out. And as you know, in December of 2009, the Philadelphia Inquirer, Craig McCoy, Nancy Phillips, published a series, "Justice Delayed, Denied, Dismissed," and it chronicled the severe dysfunction across the board of the Philadelphia criminal justice system. With that as a backdrop and with all of us working with the municipal budget in freefall, we began working together to do all that we could to make the system better, and I think that the MacArthur Foundation's recognition demonstrates how, of the hundreds of cities that applied, they saw that our commitment was the most meaningful and the truest and worthy of receipt of the award. I really believe that we, being smart on crime doesn't mean that we're soft on criminals, so we have to do all that we can. Jody is sitting next to me when I became the DA. We tripled the number of people, not trying cases in the courtroom, but just those that are in a room reviewing all the paperwork to ensure that we only charge the right people, that we only charge them with the right crimes. There was a lot of tension at first when we did that. A lot of people were mad that we were reviewing cases in that way, but it was the right thing to do. And we've, as you've heard, significantly, almost by eight times, increased the number of diversionary programs that we have now here in Philadelphia. We have Veterans Court, you heard of Dawn Court, you heard of The Choice Is Yours. I have a program with Community College, where instead of sending someone to jail with a felony, we're going to send them to Community College. So The Choice Is Yours, as an example, and I've spoken with Councilman Green about possibly different funding sources, but if we were to send someone to state prison, Mr. Chairman, for a year, it costs us about $40,000. And the failure rate, the recidivism rate, as you've heard, about 63 percent get rearrested within three years of their release. So from a far-left wing, "Let's Get Something Done," to a far-right wing, "Return on Investment" perspective, what we're doing is failing. The Choice Is Yours is a program in which we take individuals that could go to jail for a minimum of one year for the sale of illegal drugs on our streets, and instead of sending them to prison, we teach them life skills, right? Don't get another tattoo on your eyelid, pull your pants up, show up on time. They get literacy training, work-ready training for jobs that are necessary in the economy of Philadelphia. And if they successfully complete the program, Mr. Chairman, their records, we don't just drop the case, we expunge their record. And so this is a significant case, but it costs us about $4,000 a year to operate. I'm very thankful that Jerry Lenfest and Marguerite Lenfest, the Lenfest Foundation, began by giving us $1.4 million to get started. We received another, I think, close to $400,000 from the William Penn Foundation, but I truly believe this is something that municipal government and the state government should fund at that $4,000 per person. We could save a lot of lives by an increase in The Choice Is Yours program, but we have a lot of other programs, AMP 1, AMP 2, all these other programs, you know of, the SAM program, Small Amounts of Marijuana, where instead of trying these cases and clogging the courtrooms, we're trying to address the criminogenic needs of these individuals so they don't come back to court, so they don't revictimize others, and all this is saving the city money on top of promoting public safety.
So the increase, as you're just describing for the soft skills and
Correct.
and some other, you know, components to diversionary programs to reduce the recidivism, you say that 63 percent are back in the system
Correct.
within three years. So all, does that include expungement? You would mention that?
No. So we're working, I know many council people, I know Councilman Johnson, and my councilman, Councilman Curtis Jones Jr. often contact me and wants to do more, working with the Bar Association, working with the Baristers Association to put on expungement clinics, and we are definitely supporters of that so that people who have had their cases thrown out of court or withdrawn prosecution or were acquitted would have a greater opportunity to have those records expunged. It's a step, as I said earlier, beyond just banning the box, which I know passed through council recently. And so we've asked, it'd be helpful, so that we could cut down the backlog, we could review more of those cases, if we were to have an additional, $175,000 would allow us to hire two ADAs and a clerk just to handle those expungements in a much better and more efficient way.
Let me create. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I want to talk about the Economics Crime Unit, which is one that I worked very closely with as a staffer here for 15 years in this body, but before I do that, I needed to, for the record, get But before I do that, I needed to, for the record, give a special shout-out to Greg Rowe, who I began working with during his tenure in the Rendell Administration with the mandatory reporting of lost and stolen guns, when we were able to push for that historic vote on the floor and when we were working on the passage of House Bill 1264, which was actually signed into law and allowed for experts to testify in cases of sexual assault. And obviously, the attention was, after the Sandusky trial, received so much attention, and I just needed to say thank you to him for the record. From the Economic Crimes Unit perspective, how many lawyers do we have assigned to that unit?
First, let me thank you for recognizing Greg Rowe. I have the opportunity, and I just, I work with 600 of the greatest people, and Greg Rowe, who is the Chief of our Legislation Policy Unit, does a phenomenal job. The District Attorneys Association of Pennsylvania really is comprised of two people that would go to Harrisburg, as you know from your history as a state legislator. Greg Rowe and Ms. Ashley Martin is here, and they do a phenomenal job on behalf of all Pennsylvanians. But I want them to also work more with council. As ever, you have ideas about public safety issues, to contact us for them to help you. We have an Economic Crimes Unit, which is in our Investigations Division. It has a chief, Lisa Caulfield, and I believe we have about four assistant district attorneys that are assigned to the Economic Crimes Unit. They handle all types of cases, ranging from cases in which elders are being scammed in many ways, cases often in which there's about $50,000 or more in controversy where someone is trying to steal a deed of a property, and they do a lot of great work. I get a lot of crazy emails from people who've said that I may have inherited a million dollars. You might get some of those too. And every time I get those emails, I forward them to our Economic Crimes Units because they're often, they're a pattern, there are people that are trying to prey on people, but they do a lot of great work in our Economic Crimes Unit.
That number that you just gave, $50,000, and that was in regards to deeds, I'm really concerned about the issues associated with home contractors. And while I'm, you know, familiar, obviously, with the Home Improvement Consumer Protection Act and its relevance to the civil remedies, right? We have seen an influx, particularly with the issues associated specifically with a mortgage product called reverse mortgages.
Yes.
And during that hearing, we heard a lot about home contractors, but they talked about the low amount, the low dollar amount. So, my question to you is, one, does that unit coordinate with LNI on the prosecution of contractors? Are they communicating and coordinating sort of with the senior law center? And is there a limit to what the amount of the contractor fraud is that would trigger our department to then pursue prosecution?
So, the easy answer is yes, in that Deb Nixon is an assistant district attorney in our Economic Crimes Unit. She handles the majority of our elder abuse cases when it comes to economic abuse. And so, yes, she works with the Philadelphia Corporation for the Aging and the Elder Law Project with that. I will have to find out about working with LNI also, but if we find that there's a pattern, those often are things that we will put before a grand jury or we will conduct an investigation with the Major Crimes Unit of the Philadelphia Police Department to get to the bottom of it. The $50,000 threshold is just something for that unit. But if somebody is, if there's 99 cents in controversy and there's a crime, our office will prosecute it. It will be handled by one of our geographic units as opposed to the Economic Crimes Unit.
I will, Mr. District Attorney, if you can. I would be very interested in getting an overview of the prosecuted cases that the Economic Crimes Unit has worked on from throughout the city, and I appreciate your referencing the regional offices
Yes.
and the role that they play. But if we could have sent to the council president an over, a citywide overview and then have them, based on your regional locations, or if it was done by Councilmatic District, obviously, that would be greatest for us. And I'll come back during the second round because, and you mentioned a pattern, but our challenge is sometimes whether or not the contractor, the contract is so low, let's say $1,000 or $1,500. What I'm hearing from constituents is that the amount is so low, right, that it is not sort of being prosecuted and they're being referred to the AG's office, which is why I'm bringing it up on the record.
Right. And Councilwoman, I think part of that is that when it comes to our charging and the police have investigated, the question comes down to, is it a civil matter or was there actual crime? Clearly, it could be consumer protection issues that aren't criminal, that they have civil remedies, and that's something that the Attorney General's Office handles in their Consumer Protection Bureau. But I will definitely get back to you and maybe set an appointment so that Aunt Panterio, who is here with me, she was the deputy of our Investigations Division, which has oversight over our Economic Crimes Unit, and Curtis Douglas, who is currently that deputy, between the knowledge of those two, maybe sitting in a meeting with you and your staff members or a council hearing on about that, I think would be very worthwhile.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for your leeway. But again, it would be great to have, from a citywide perspective, those specs and those numbers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Chairman Greenly, and good morning, Mr. District Attorney.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
How are you doing? You look pretty good, by the way, considering you had a boxing match this weekend.
Yeah, well, I'm doing the best I can. My head is still ringing.
That's a great cause. That's good.
Thank you.
I have a few quick questions for you. First of all, I attended an orientation when I first, I think it was January or February of this year.
Yes.
We had a great orientation. You must have had 25 or six district attorneys in the room. Very informative. It was the best orientation I attended of any department in the city.
Thank you.
And you guys do a really good job, so I just want the commenda on the record for the job all of you are doing. And I will say this, The Choice Is Yours, and the way I understand the numbers on The Choice Is Yours, which is a great program, and that we should fund whatever is needed, is that it costs about $4,000 per person a year?
That's correct.
And the savings is about $40,000 to $44,000, $43,000?
Well, it costs approximately $35,000 to $40,000 to house someone in a state-of-Pennsylvania correctional facility. These are people that would have gone to state prison, and it only costs us about $4,000, which is less than what it costs to run it in San Francisco. It was about $5,000 per involved individual there. And we have a great partnership with JEVs. They provide the majority of the services. The Pennsylvania Prison Society, we work with a lot of great partners to provide the training to help these individuals. And clearly, it has significantly reduced recidivism of these individuals, made them productive Philadelphians.
So, but the other benefit that we're, maybe should really also focus on, you mentioned it, is that not just the economics today, but it's then, they don't have a record, they can get a job, they can become productive,
Correct.
they can pay taxes, and all those benefits that spin out are huge.
Correct. Because for the most part, if you have a felony conviction, Councilman Dom, it's almost like an economic death sentence. You can't get a job. This gives that opportunity to not only just not serve a year in prison, but to become productive, employable Philadelphians, and then you might appreciate tax-paying Philadelphians.
I do appreciate that. How much money do you think you need for this program from the city?
Well, you know, I would love to scale it up. If we had 200 people in it a year, it'd be $4,000 per person.
So, you need $800,000?
That'd be a great start, because I'm also trying to lobby Secretary Wetzel to pay for it. But see, we're caught in a catch-22 in that I'm very thankful, former Commissioner Geroa and the Board of the Prison, they've given us $50,000 the last two years to operate it. Otherwise, we could not have continued. We're in a catch-22 in that these individuals, yes, they would have gone to state prison, but Secretary Wetzel believes that since they would have spent a lot of their time housed in county on state road prior to being sentenced, that many of them never would have gotten to state prison. And then we're being told by the county that, well, it's a state sentence, the state should pay for it. But clearly, someone should pay for it, and not only the private sector. I'm very thankful for Jerry and Marguerite Lenfest and the William Penn Foundation, but I really believe that this is something that the municipal government and the state government should fund, because clearly, it makes a difference for public safety and in the lives of those young men and women that are graduates.
So, I don't know the process, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to go on the record, and I'd like to see us as a body, fund this program the fullest that's needed. It's the best investment we can make and make sure that the district attorney and his office has the monies to fund these programs for whatever's applicable to it. One last comment I will say to you. I want you to remember this: When you take one idea, it's plagiarism. When you take many ideas, it's research.
There we go. Okay.
Anyway, thank you. Thanks very much.
I'll do as much research as possible.
Have to remember that one. Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and still, well, good afternoon, Mr. District Attorney. Thank you for being a part of the Justice Continuum, meaning an integral part of CJAB, an integral part of justice in the city of Philadelphia. You have a hard job. You're not a social worker. I get it. Your job is to protect the public, and sometimes, you know, that means locking people up. So, having said all of that, there are a couple of areas that I would like to get your feedback on. A couple of years ago in the budget, I made a big deal about witness protection. We fought for and got you additional money in the budget. In recent months, we had a rash of murders, and some of those people were related, not related actually to me, but through acquaintance I knew. I mean, I got to sit down at dinner tables about integral parts of what happens really when these things happen. And it was eye-opening to say, at least, you kind of read about reports and statistics, and they are not as graphic as the pain of a mother.
Mm-hmm.
So, now, having said that, one of the issues that came up was witness protection and that the young lady that testified before Kenyatta Johnson's gun violence hearing talked about graphically how the youth that were around her son that was murdered were in fear of their life and even at times were hesitant to come forth as witnesses because there's not enough of insulation protection, I don't know the proper word, to safeguard people who have to go right back into that community. And what her testimony said, that I shop in the same place that the killer of my son's mother shops. I worship two blocks away from the block where these young Thundercats congregate. So, it's not like it's a big giant ocean that they can hide in.
Right.
It's a small, in the North Philly area in particular, we're talking about two blocks over, one block up in a lot of cases. So, have we, what, give me a synopsis of the state of witness protection and what, to what degree does that impact justice and conviction rates and so forth? And then finally, what we can do to help in that regard, because without witness protection, there is no justice. Because unless you rely on cameras only, which is a good thing, we've invested in it, but it is not the only thing that is needed for a solid conviction. I'm trying to tell you your business, but from a outsider's observation, this is scary.
So, first, I want to thank you for your continued support for witness protection and witness relocation. I want to thank you for constantly setting up meetings between myself, my office, and the Philadelphia Housing Authority, as you almost do every year, to address this. I just want to start off by saying, you started by talking about just the personal context, not just the numbers. Every morning, the first thing I read, I get on my iPhone the statistics of the shootings and the homicides from overnight. But beyond that, you know, the most difficult thing for me about being the DA is the emotional toll of meeting the family members of a victim from the Amtrak derailment, meeting and going to the funeral for the young girl who was getting her hair braided on the front steps in South Philadelphia, and she was shot. And having to go to the Temple University Trauma Center when Officer Robert Wilson III is lying there and then declared dead in front of all of his family members, that is the most difficult part, is just the actual meeting people. And, you know, on many occasions, as you've said, you've contacted me personally about members, constituents of yours, people that you know, people from around the city just contacted you because they were afraid. And almost invariably, every time, I then put you in touch with Jen Selber, who's the Chief of my homicide unit, so that we can get the right services as quickly as possible for those people. The state of witness protection and witness relocation in Philadelphia is better than what it had been, which is still nowhere what it could be. People think of the movie My Blue Heaven, where, you know, you're a witness to something, and then you get moved off to Arizona, you get a new identity, and you get a middle-class lifestyle in Arizona. It's not, it's not how it happens in Philadelphia. Often, at most
Unless you're in the mob.
Unless you're in the mob. At most, we are fortunate to have a great relationship with the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and if you're living in a property in West Philadelphia, you might get moved somewhere in North Philadelphia. We are very fortunate, however, as a result, again, of the Justice Delayed, Denied, Dismissed. We saw with the great rate of cases that were being thrown out of felony court, they weren't even being held for court because of witness intimidation. So, that was one of the reasons why I asked the courts to work with us and to bring all of the courts, not having preliminary hearings out at the police district, which you think might be safe, but they weren't safe, bringing them to the Criminal Justice Center, and also allowing us to have indicting grand juries. So, since about 2012, we have taken about 1,600 cases before the indicting grand jury, cases in which victims and witnesses came forward and said they were being threatened, they were being intimidated. Almost every homicide case in Philadelphia, there's witness intimidation. So, we are now bringing those cases, instead of doing long-term, like the normal investigation and a preliminary hearing, we're putting those cases before the indicting grand jury, which protects the victim or the witness from having to confront, you refer to them as Thundercats, instead of having to address and being confronted by the defendant and his friends in the courtroom, having them take pictures. Justice Renee, sorry, Judge Renee Caldwell Hughes was fundamental in creating a book for the judges to understand how to identify people that were being intimidated, threatened in the courtroom. People were taking pictures, posting them on Twitter as rats on Facebook. Doing all of those things has allowed us to hold more defendants accountable now through the use of the indicting grand jury. The funding that we get for the witness relocation and protection is primarily for the transportation to and from court often, in some situations when we put people in hotels in around the city. That's still problematic. Often, we have people who we put in these, put in the hotel, they invite friends from the neighborhood to go to the pool. So, we're trying to do as much as we can, but I think a lot of it is every step of the way, and identifying people earlier who are being threatened, charging people for witness intimidation, and publicizing that. Doing all of those things, I think, has made a difference. Again, additional funds would allow us to find better ways to keep these people safe through the use of county detectives for a more meaningful way.
So, I might even encourage some of my guys and colleagues on the Public Safety Committee to look at that narrow sliver of justice to see how we can enhance protection. Again, the brave souls that walk over there in CJC
Right.
and then walk back to that community
Right. They're going back and they're waiting for the 46 bus on 60th Street.
Right. And so, that concept, not to mention the set of elevators that you have to ride up with some of the defendant's family members
Right.
and some of the, and the Sheriff's Department has done a good job of escorting people out, but we need to evolve this concept
Correct.
of witness protection if we could. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back on my next round to talk about deed theft. So, whoever deals with that, that is a growing issue for my constituents. So, I'm gonna pass it, pass off to my colleagues, but you can tee up deed
Okay.
So, don't look at that look. You're like, oh, God.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
I'm staying. I just got back from Penn State. You'll be happy to know that.
Okay. You have, well, this weekend, I thought you were, you know, doing the boxing thing and the Broad Street run and...
Boxing was Saturday, Broad Street run was Sunday, but then Sunday evening through Tuesday, I was at leadership training for the District Attorneys Association in State College, Pennsylvania.
Okay, very good. Well, many people know Seth and I go way back to our days at Penn State together, even I graduated from Temple University. But we have had a long history, and I think that overall, I do want to give you accolades and, you know, recognize the work that you have done as a district attorney. I can only tell you that the staff of the DA's office has been extremely professional in my dealings with them. It's an outstanding staff overall, and I have, you know, I had my own incident where I was rear-ended by, you know, an alleged drunk driver, and went through a process. And I have to say that the DA's office handle it, handled it with such a level of professionalism that, you know, they were calling me way more than I was calling them, to give me updates and information, and I really appreciated it. And I just wanted to let you know that and be on the record about that, because I think it's important to recognize folks when, when they're doing the right things and when they're doing good things. But there is something else that I wanted to mention to you, and I know we've had a number of conversations about this, which is the number of, well, not a number, but three employees in particular who go by the last names, Afinna Castanzo and Blessington, who have had some issues around the porn gate scandal. And we've talked about this, we talked about this last fall, we talked about it last winter. I believe we talked about it earlier this year, and here we are in the spring, talking about it again, and it's just a little bit frustrating, actually, not a little bit, it's a whole lot frustrating, that we still have to continue to have these conversations. And it puts me in the mindset that no matter how much great work you do, and you do great work, no matter how much good work you do, it is diminished if we continue to employ people who have received, in some cases circulated, racist, pornographic, and homophobic emails. And I think that, you know, in 2016, I don't even think we should be having this conversation. I think it's outrageous that we're still here, still having these kinds of conversations that started, really, with your release statement on the Friday before Labor Day at 4:23 PM. You released a statement saying that these employees were going to receive sensitivity training. And then nothing happened, and, you know, we continued to press, along with NOW, National Organization of Women, and another number of other women's groups. And then we were told in late November that they had received sensitivity training. So a couple of months went by before anything was done, and as I understand it, the sensitivity training wasn't even sought until a week prior to it actually occurring. And then after that, there were still, you know, some delays, and then in early December, we were made aware that the transferred employees were transferred to different units. And so I wanted to get an update from you, because I was told, last conversation I had with your office, I was told that there were going to be some additional changes in regards to the employment status of those employees, and wanted to find out what has happened. So as I understand it, Frank Fina was transferred from Special Investigations to Civil Litigation, Castanza from Special Investigations to Appeals, and Blessington from Insurance Fraud to Post-Conviction something. And I just wanted to see if those employees are still with the district attorney's office?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And they're still in those units that they were transferred to?
Yes. So you have another question?
No, if you want to, you know, expound on your...
Certainly. So, one, I'll say that, you know, I'm not here to defend the practices at Governor Corbett's Attorney General's Office, or the atmosphere, the tenor, the tone, the culture of that office that allowed people to do what was going on at that time. I think, as you're right, you have every reason to be upset, rational and reasonable people should expect more from civil employees. But as the CEO of the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, I had to ascertain what my employees did, if they did anything while they were the employee of the city of Philadelphia, which they had not. Two of these individuals were merely the passive recipients of ignorant and offensive emails five years prior, when they had worked at another place of employment. And so my position, after a very lengthy, and I think exhaustive, internal investigation, was that it can't be the standard that we fire employees for having received ignorant and repulsive emails years prior. And I, we looked at the behavior of them in our office, if they'd done anything similar, which they had not. And so, but you're right, I made the initial decision, and then after speaking with you, after, you know, reviewing and listening to the concerns of former Councilwoman Tasco and, and others, and speaking to other members of council, I said, you know, there's something to what they're saying and their, their feelings, and we need to do a little bit more. And so we did a little bit more, and I really, I came out then, I said, you know, we need to ask the Attorney General, because the standard, again, we have two very respected current members of our Supreme Court, who were merely passive recipients of the same exact emails. We're not asking them, I don't hear anybody asking them to step down. The Attorney General herself, her sister, were also recipients of the same, and the Attorney General's sister forwarded these things. So again, I have to see what's in the best interest of our office, of the people. These are three individuals that definitely made an error in judgment, but have had tremendous careers as public servants, have a tremendous body of experience and wealth of knowledge that we just can't get by jettisoning them off and just hiring somebody out of law school. So I understand how you feel, I feel in many ways the same, but as the district attorney, I have to evaluate the facts of these individuals...
Certainly.
Not just something that Milton Street is handing out on the corner, and really think about what is going on, who are these people, what's the best thing for them, need to do for them and public safety in the city. And as a result of all that, I came out later, and I said, I demanded that the Attorney General release all 10,000 emails, not just, you know, 21 emails that these three guys got, and that two of them are merely passive recipients.
Well, let me just say a couple of things. So the first is that, you know, for me, this is really, this has nothing to do about with Kathleen King, you know, Corbett, Milton Street, any of these other outside players. This is really about these three individuals who work in the district attorney's office right now with taxpayer dollars. And the fact that some of the emails that were circulated included, you know, a heavyset African-American woman eating fried chicken, you know, and of course, you know, a caption beneath it that was demeaning and degrading. Three African-American, young black women related to, as, or referred to as, the New Three Stooges. And of course, there's the hot ghetto mess, and then there's the one with the person running with a bucket of fried chicken, because, you know, we all love fried chicken, I guess. So, but you understand what I'm saying. I'm offended by these emails. And so if somebody sends me something that I'm offended by, I will email them back and say, "Don't send me this anymore."
But we're not going to ask you to resign if they sent it to you.
Did they, did they stop the emails? They did not stop the emails, did they?
I've asked the Attorney General to give us that information.
And they stand in a position, they stand in a position where they have to make judgments. They make judgments on whether cases are going to trial, they make decisions on people's spates every single day in those previous positions. Now, in the new positions, do they make those same judgments?
So now Frank Fina is in our civil litigation unit, so he helps represent the district attorney's office when people have seen fit to sue the office or to make Freedom of Information Act requests. He had been in charge of the criminal division at the Attorney General's Office, so this is a significantly different responsibility. Mr. Castanza had been the chief of our Special Investigations Unit, handling police-involved shootings, long-term investigations, so him, he's now in our appeals unit. Significant difference, different responsibility, but not handling open criminal cases. But I spoke with you, you were concerned about these people...
Absolutely.
Listening and having impact over justice for people who have opened cases, for their liberty. So I listened to you, and I made changes after having spoken with you and other members of council. And Mr. Blessington is in our Post Conviction and Relief Act Unit, which is also in our Law Division, just reviewing cases in which people have made claims after they've been convicted, and handling those cases in appellate court and post-conviction court. So I think that their responsibilities, I listened to you and other members of council, and I think I acted accordingly. At the same time, I stand by my position that to, it cannot be the standard, it will not be the standard in my office, that I will terminate people for being recipients of emails five years prior, when their work experience in the district attorney's office has been nothing but exemplary.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. I obviously very much disagree. I think that these emails are just, you know, I don't know how many people have seen them, but to see them, to talk about them is one thing, to see them is something completely different. And I have to admit, before, when I had heard about the emails, you know, I just thought, oh, which is probably, you know, is something that's, that's not so nice to look at, or, you know, whatever. But when I actually saw what was circulated by these legal professionals, it was beyond offensive. And I did expect that my district attorney would do something about it, and that it wouldn't require meetings, press conferences, all of these conversations over and over again, press reports in a newspaper. I did not think it will require all that it has required to get any sort of action whatsoever. Because as I mentioned, you said on the Friday before Labor Day, 2015, at 4:30 PM, which makes it appear that it's a story that won't get picked up, nobody will be paying attention, nobody's looking right now, everybody's off to the shore, doing whatever they're doing for the Labor Day holiday. And so at that point, it says they're going to receive sensitivity training. Over two months later, they received that training, and that's only because of a press conference, I believe that's only because of a press conference, that we had the week before, and which we called on their resignation, because nothing had been done.
Thank you. Now, we just said, again, we can agree to disagree on this matter. I still love you, and will work with you, and I appreciate you allowing members of my staff to work in your office for our Community Action Center in your office.
Absolutely.
I think it's a tremendous work and collaboration between us.
Yes, we do.
But again, no matter when I have a press conference, that press conference, press release, actually, was based upon when the Attorney General had released information. I conducted a very thorough investigation, oh, yeah, I conduct, she released it in August, we conducted a very thorough review of all the documents, I talked to Fortune 500...
Seth, come on, come on, Seth. This was really, I mean, to say, this was at least the...
I'm sorry, you know, I can have a press, I had a press conference on a Monday. People were upset that I had it on that Monday, because they thought I only did it that day because Villanova had won the national, no, I had it, yeah, that Villanova had won a national championship, and I was trying to, you know, dump it. It's just, no matter what I do, there will always be second guessing, I understand that. But again, we'll just have to agree to disagree in how we handle this matter. I believe, again, yes, the emails themselves were offensive, but the question for me was what to do with these three employees that had, were part of a culture at the Attorney General's Office, where they were told to use their government emails for personal email use, where there were no policies against the use of this type of stuff, unlike in Philadelphia, where we have an email use policy, where people aren't allowed to use these emails for personal sharing of information, personal emails. All of those things, you know, I think that we had a very thorough process, and I don't think that terminating these career prosecutors for what they did while they were in the Attorney General's Office, when their behavior was, the sharing of these offensive emails was appropriate. Mr. Chairman?
Chair. Thank you. Madam Chair.
And I'm way over, so thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Mr. Chairman, District Attorney Williams, I wanted to follow up on some questions regarding The Choice is Yours. I know there's been some conversation this afternoon regarding that, as well as the MacArthur Grant. And I know Councilman Dom talked about some initial funding for that program, but I also understand that through the MacArthur Grant, there may be funding for that program as well. So can you maybe provide some more information, based on your understanding, on what dollars may be coming to DA's office for recidivism in The Choice is Yours, based on MacArthur Grant?
So again, the acknowledgement of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board and all the partners in Philadelphia through the award of the MacArthur Foundation is phenomenal. The $3.4 million, however, as I said earlier, is an astounding error when you were to look at public safety's funding for the city of Philadelphia. I think public safety is approximately a quarter of the city's budget, of what's probably about $3 billion. But no, none of the money from the MacArthur Foundation is going towards The Choice is Yours, and I'm very upset about that. But they, the goal of this grant, really, is to reduce the county prison population. And the MacArthur people at the last minute believe that these are individuals that should be in state prison. And so as a result of that, additional funds were defunded that we were going to get from MacArthur. I am thankful to say, though, that the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, which is chaired by Montgomery County Commission Chair Josh Shapiro, has granted us $200,000 for The Choice is Yours. We're very thankful for that. I'm very thankful, again, for former Commissioner Girola and the new prison commissioner, who was just, she was just sworn in, for the $50,000 that they have given us. But really, this is a drop in the bucket for a program that, if expanded, would take a lot of cases out of the courthouse, would save the taxpayers' money, and most importantly, would promote public safety by reducing recidivism, reducing continued victimization.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank you for participating in our hearings that we had earlier this month, well, actually, last month, in reference to autism and autism awareness, as well as your staffing about in the Social Impact Fund hearings that we had, trying to identify additional funding for The Choice is Yours.
Thank you.
There's been some conversation earlier in the year during the budget process regarding truancy, and a conversation back and forth during the hearings that Councilman Johnson and Councilman Jones had regarding youth gun violence. And I wanted to get some perspective from you regarding the truancy issue. I've seen some communications back and forth. I want to get some perspective from you in reference to the initiatives that you want to undertake regarding truancy.
Certainly. And again, I wanted to start off by saying, I'm one of the biggest supporters of Dr. Height. Often, I put my glasses on, I walk down the street, people confuse me for Dr. Height. And so I wanted to start off by saying, I think being the mayor of a big city in the Northeast with infrastructure problems like we have is one of the toughest jobs. One of the second most difficult jobs, I would assume, and I perceive, is being the superintendent of a school district in a large northeastern city like ours, with the failing tax structure that we have, and almost a third of our population living at or below the national poverty level. So we were not in any way trying to be combative with Dr. Height and his staff, but the issue is, Councilman, that our statistics and what we were being told by Dr. Nunnery, Dr. Ackerman, was that close to 50% of the public school students in Philadelphia weren't graduating. And we do know from our statistics that if you are a high school dropout, you're about eight times more likely to go to state prison. And even more tragically, Councilman, 20 times more likely to be a homicide victim. So I believe that we have to do all that we can to reduce truancy. Again, guarantee universal pre-K, that's probably the greatest thing we can do to prevent crime. But doing all that we can after that to reduce truancy will keep our city safe. And so I believe we do all that we can. I do know that the Department of Human Services, Family Court, right, they all provide a lot of tremendous, and the school district, provide great services for families to reduce truancy. But Councilman Dom said earlier, that not only do I do plagiarism, but it's research. And what I found in San Francisco, where Dr. Ackerman had been the superintendent, so I became the DA, Dr. Ackerman was a superintendent. When she was the superintendent of the unified school system in San Francisco, her partner in reducing truancy was Kamala Harris, author of Smart on Crime. So I traveled to San Francisco prior to becoming the DA to meet with Kamala Harris and her staff, to see what could we do to replicate their achievement in reducing truancy in San Francisco. There are many great things they're doing here, but one thing that they did there, that Dr. Ackerman wanted us to do here, was what they did in San Francisco. It was what I hope we can do here in Philadelphia, as a last step, after everything else has failed, after a child has remained chronically truant for two years, have the school give us the name of the child, the address of the guardian, and the name of the guardian, for us to then forward a letter to that guardian... and the name of the guardian, for us to then forward a letter to that guardian. You might not know it, but Derek is chronically truant. Please contact Principal Skinner within two weeks. Failure to do so will result in further consequences. And those, and what they found in San Francisco, about 95% of the people that got that letter contacted the principal. So the school could then provide school-based, community-based, court-based, or their children and youth services-based services. Because when an elementary school student is chronically truant, it's not that fourth graders decide, you know, decide that they're just going to stay home, or they're going to stay home for 10 days at a time. There's some sort of dysfunction in the household that has to be addressed. Often, the parent is using that child as a guardian for younger siblings. There could be other issues in the home, there could be abuse, there could be some sort of addiction problem. We have to get to the root cause of that problem. My goal is not to create an entire wing at the prison of guardians of kids that are chronically truant, but to be a partner with the school district, for them to use us as the heavy. Hey, you're going to get, after that first letter, you're going to get another letter. Hey, you do not respond to Principal Skinner. You have 10 days from today's date to respond to District Attorney, Deputy District Attorney Angel Flores of our juvenile division. Failure to do so will result in further action. And then ultimately, those that fail to do that, we would create a problem-solving court in Family Court, where those that we agreed had the most egregious cases of chronic truancy for elementary-age school students, that we would then charge that parent with endangering the welfare of a child, that we'd bring them in front of a specific judge designated by Family Court, who would hear those cases, and then provide them with services. And if the child then came off the rolls as having been chronically truant, again, we would expunge their record. So the goal is to be another tool for the school district to use to reduce truancy. So I want to be a partner with them in this, and we have created this partnership and collaboration with many charter schools, and it's been very successful.
I know that Dallas is wrong, I just wanted to do a quick follow-up from the colloquy between your office and the school district. It was, from my understanding position of the school district, that they are not allowed by law to provide information to you, and that they would need, I guess, for lack of a better word, relief from, for a judicial district to provide information. From your perspective, is that correct or not?
And so, I provided, the very next day, I walked over to Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's office, a copy of what they cited, which is FERPA. And I took them, it's almost, it's equivalent of an educational HIPAA.
Right.
Right? So your doctor just can't give out information. And I wouldn't want the schools just to randomly give out information about the child's health records, the child's grades, their, any issues. There's an appropriate reason for the genesis and the origin of FERPA. But FERPA allows for MOUs between the school district and law enforcement. And so, we want them to follow FERPA as they do in San Francisco and other municipalities in California and around the country, just to give us the limited information. I don't want to know the kid's grade. We get the grades of the kids when they're in delinquency court, but we just want to know for these kids that are chronically truant, the name of the individual, the guardian, and the address, so we can send the responsible party a letter. But George Mosi, who's my first assistant, was for years, 12 years, the deputy of our juvenile division. I asked him to give a little more detail to that.
So, George Mosi, first assistant. So there's a disagreement between us and the school district about the interpretation of FERPA. My reading of FERPA allows them to appoint a law enforcement entity, and that easily could be their school district police. The school district police would then have the ability to share information with another law enforcement entity, and that requires the development of a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. If the school district wanted to share with us what amounts to criminal justice information, which is what truancy is, truancy is a summary offense, they could easily accomplish that with an MOU.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Green, I wanted to correct the record for something I said earlier. No money from MacArthur was coming to DA's office for The Choice Is Yours, but I was corrected that some money is going to JEVs for their support of The Choice Is Yours. But I'll get to you and your staff the exact amount.
I know my time is up. I have some additional questions. I'll come around in the next round.
Thank you, Chairman. And I want to state for the record before we proceed with the questioning, it seems like there's a lot more members in the queue, and other departments are here for their budget testimony. We will be taking a short recess immediately following the questioning and testimony here with the district attorney's office. So, with that being said, Chair recognizes Councilwoman McGinn.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
District Attorney Williams, it's a pleasure. And, you know, we're looking forward to working closely with you as you negotiate out some of these areas, especially around truancy. I know that there's lots of issues that need to be worked out, a lot of concerns. And my hope really is, though, that the, we all want to take truancy seriously, but it is very important that it's not, we don't move children into a criminal system too quickly, too fast, without understanding better what's going on. And I'm sure you and I will have lots of discussions about that moving forward. Before I get into some of the questions, I did want to say, I wanted to reiterate what Councilwoman Bass was talking about in terms of concerns about the three staff members. And, you know, I understand that your resolution around this issue is, is what it is, but I really hope that your office does not excuse behaviors that are deemed offensive and shocking and off the charts in terms of what was, what was disseminated and, and received on official email because there wasn't a policy on it. I don't think that that's an excuse. I think we're all professional individuals. We understand when we're looking and viewing things, you know, they are not personally offensive to Councilwoman Bass. They offend the sensibilities of every individual who, you know, operates in a functional society, frankly, and, and takes their job very seriously. At, at the heart of it is the need for a justice system that's rooted in trust, and trust in our, in our prosecutors to exercise strong judgments on issues when many women and people of color have often felt that they cannot be heard or viewed on an, on an equal footing. And whether, that is not something that you, obviously, in your position, are going to evaluate your employees in that way, but for many in the public, they will not know that. And it is so important that, that our public service be held to the highest standard in that respect. And my hope would be that it's not just a matter of sensitivity training for individuals on an issue that's, you know, those things were just too shocking to even imagine that sensitive, sensitivity training was, was the issue that was at play. It's more that we need to know that there are proactive policies in place from the DA's office that proactively reviews issues of sexism, racism, homophobia, and other types of things that, that ensure that this does not happen, that you are vigilant and proactive about it, and that these are policies that you clearly establish moving forward, so.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the opportunity to clarify that again, Councilwoman. So thank you. And I think it's very important, you're, you're correct. And we are extremely vigilant at the district attorney's office to ensure that that type of behavior does not occur in our office workplace, or by our employees through their social media when they're off duty. We have very, very strict policies in our office. We have very, we have leadership training for all of our supervisors monthly, where we talk about these issues every month. We have very, very strict policies. So I think it's appropriate because many readers of the newspapers, or blogs, or people that might be watching this on television at home today, might think that these employees did it while they were working for the district attorney's office, and that we did not have policies about these issues. That is not the case. They were employees of the attorney general's office under Governor Corbett when he was the attorney general, and they lacked the oversight. They had a poor culture that allowed these types of things to happen. So, I think it's very, very important to recognize that this is not something that's happened under my watch at the district attorney's office, or something that the culture of the district attorney's office would allow. We have very, very strict computer use policies, social media policies, anti-discrimination policies, anti-harassment policies, that we work in accord with the Law Department of the city to ensure both the legality and the ju, that justice is being meted out for the victims, witnesses, and our employees on a daily basis. So thank you for giving me that opportunity to clarify that.
Understood. Yep, thank you. And just letting you know that Councilwoman Bass is not alone in establishing the fact that, whatever the culture of an office may be, the concern remains that individuals can exercise judgment at every given point in time, and, and the critical need for that judgment to be exercised at all costs is essential. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I wanted to, I wanted to, to get your thoughts on, on drones.
Okay.
The reason it comes up is, is because we have been talking about for a while security cameras, and more security cameras. And the last time I heard the price, the price was $5,000 per camera. I don't know if that's still the price, I don't know if that's accurate. But the camera is static, you, you know, and then the problem we have is you need some way of someone watching a bunch of static cameras. It might have some limited mobility, they're easy to avoid. Other jurisdictions now are starting to integrate drones into the use of their policing, their firefighting, their, their streets department, their LNI, and, and other types of services. When they are, when they're, when they're integrated in that way, for example, one of the problems that we have with limited availability of personnel is, for example, when three fire alarms go off, you have to pick which one you're going to. And drones may be helpful in saying that this is a false alarm, something like that. I have complaints as I go through, you know, various community entities. Now, doing the heroin opioid, I was talking to a, a neighbor, a very slight gentleman who came in from the suburbs with his wife to Fishtown. He complained that they have drug dealers on his porch, that he talked to them, eventually moved to the front of his house, and he's trying to hope to get them across the corner. This gentleman is nobody that should be confronting
Right.
drug dealers. Okay, but he has called and called and called the police, and he's just frustrated. And, and so, one of the things I thought is, you know, I know there's a limit, a limited amount of available cars and officers, but drones also could go out there. They're very well-marked, they light up, people see them coming, they're good for moving things around, they record, they do all that type of thing. I think one of the problems as we even begin this discussion is stop and frisk. And I bring up stop and frisk because stop and frisk unfortunately has taken on its new life in our city. And people ask me, "Councilman, do you support stop and frisk as a crime-fighting policy?" I, I tell them, "No, I don't." Stop and frisk is not a crime-fighting policy. It's a, it's a evidentiary decision that allows officers, when provided a reasonable, articulate basis, that a suspect should be stopped and investigated, but may be armed and dangerous, to stop them and then frisk them to that limited degree in whatever they find is admissible in court. That's what I try to explain every community meeting I go, and on Word, and wherever I go. That, you know, but anytime somebody says, "Stop and frisk is a crime-fighting policy," I said, "That, that's going to be an abuse of the Constitution. You cannot proactively go out and create these parameters." However, the concern is that the police will abuse drones, security cameras, or whatever they have, and particularly in certain of our communities where they've felt, you know, the brunt of what they perceive, and what I agree, is unconstitutional actions unknowingly by police officers who may have been encouraged to do so. I don't know to what extent in Philadelphia. I kind of recall that was a policy. I know it was in New York. It may be a possible solution that the DA's office has some role as in the charging unit. And for those who don't know, a police officer cannot simply arrest you and then bring it to court. It has to go through, it's screened through the DA's office with ADAs who will look at it objectively, based on the information, to approve or disapprove, you know, the, the furtherance, the charges. And, and I wonder your thoughts on the use of drones within the crime-fighting area, and the possibility that the DA's office provides the, the supervision, the legal authority that limits civil rights abuses, constitutional abuses.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilman. And you've asked me a several-part law school exam. I'll start with the second part first.
You're up for it. You've been through a boxing match, a marathon.
But Councilman, I want to first thank you for the hearings that you're conducting across the city about opioid addiction. We really have to do all that we can as a city to address that scourge on, on our city. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. So, one, you're talking about the use of drones. And I really never considered or thought much about drones until our office began working with others, federal agencies, state agencies, the local police, to prepare for the papal visit. We refer to it as Popapalooza. And one of the greatest concerns was the possibility of individuals going on Amazon and buying a $1,000 drone, and strapping some explosives to it, and just flying it to the art museum steps. And we were very concerned. Some cities like San Francisco and the District of Columbia have very strict unmanned aircraft regulations. In Philadelphia, at that point, I don't think we did. So it was the first time I really began thinking about drones as it came to public safety. Your specific question, though, is really more related to just technology in the police department and law enforcement in general. And so, I, every year I come before Council, and I often say that, God bless you, I often say that, you know, we have to have as much technology as the criminals do. Often, they have much more technology than we do. And so, I know Commissioner Ross, when he came here, you know, he's appointed by the mayor, and he had to be very polite maybe with what he said, or was limited with what he said. But I have to be a great advocate for the police department, and have to say that I believe that they deserve more funding for technology, more funding for their, the police stations themselves, more funding for just the police vehicles. We, we really need to invest in public safety. And I look forward to working with the mayor. I know he's inherited a budget in many ways and the parameters from his predecessors. But I have to be an advocate for Commissioner Ross, a fellow central alum as you are, myself, to do all that, and Mr. Mosi, to do all that is necessary to keep up. What's interesting, we talk about the drones or technology, the University of Pennsylvania, as a result of a tragic homicide in the 90s, began investing a lot of money into public safety in West Philadelphia, in their part of the 18th district. And that has significantly reduced crime in that part of the 18th district. They have sound spotting cameras. When there's a shot fired, cameras automatically go to where the sound came from. They employ allied Barton security people on bikes from 8:00 PM until 4:00 AM. It's very well-lit, as is Temple University's campus now. And so, the investment into these technologies has dramatically changed. It's called the ecology of crime. You can dramatically change crime by, and crime patterns by investing in the environment, environmental design. And so, I think, of course, these investments in technology, everybody watches CSI. They think that every police car in Philadelphia has cameras, and they, we don't. And so, we need to invest in a crime lab, and all the different facilities that would allow us to reduce the backlog on ballistics examinations and DNA examination in addition to the drones. Now, the question also goes to the Constitution and the Fourth Amendment. And you spoke also about stop and frisk, which really is just the embodiment of Terry versus Ohio, a case that you studied in law school, and so did Councilman Green when he was working at the DA's office. Really, the police officer, the police officer has a reasonable, articulate suspicion to believe their crime is afoot. He or she has the absolute right to pat down that defendant. And then if they feel something that, as a result of their police, their professional experience, is the, the, you know, the form of a weapon, then they have the right, subject without a warrant, to take that item out of their pocket, off their person. So we can do things to ensure that the Constitution is protected, that the individual liberties of the defendant and that citizen is not violated, at the same time ensuring public safety. You do not have a right to privacy. You do not have a right to privacy as you stand on a street corner with a gun in your hand and drugs that you're sharing that poison to kill other Philadelphians. But we can't use drones to, you know, have the camera, have infrared, go into the, fly into the person's home, you know? So, there's definitely a balance that we can strike. But if I can say anything, doing all that we can do to improve and invest in technology for law enforcement in Philadelphia. Again, will help the taxpayers save money, and in the long run, will also increase public safety.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Taunberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Forfeiture revenues in 2014, 2015, how many, really, what was the amount that was taken in under forfeiture revenues?
Certainly. And, Councilman, not to shirk my responsibility of trying to cooperate and answer questions with counsel, but the Asset Forfeiture Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania really prohibits the district attorney from sharing with municipal funders what those totals are, out of the fear that municipal governments will defund prosecutors and law enforcement across the state for that. I can say, I believe that we have brought in about 50% less in the last two years than previously, as a result of a lot of different factors, from us not being able to sell at auctions some of these items, like the cars or gold teeth of people at the amount that we used to get. I know it seems silly, but that's the truth. And also, us employing and putting into place protocols in our office to take into consideration the public's concern of us, God bless you again, the public's concern of us taking homes of innocent third parties. And so, we have instituted policies in our office that have reduced the number of those types of cases. But at the same time, Councilman, recognizing that almost daily, we get calls from citizens, from taxpayers, from council members and your constituent services reps, that Philadelphians are afraid of drug dealers and people selling drugs out of homes, that they want us to shut down a crack house or a house of ill repute, that they want something done. And so, we are caught in that place of trying to work with the Department of License and Inspections, the police, to ensure that those crack houses are shut down. But I would like to give a better answer to you and a more full answer. I want George Mosey, the first assistant to answer. He, for many years, was the deputy of our Narcotics Division and handled all of our asset forfeiture issues. So, I'm going to ask him to give a more defined answer to you.
Certainly been a drastic decrease in the amount of money that's been recovered by virtue of seizing and then liquidating assets that were taken from drug dealers. I think we all need to remember that the district attorney's office is not the sole recipient of such money, that we share that with the seizing entity, whether it's the Police Department or other law enforcement agencies.
And what is that split approximately?
Well, with the Philadelphia Police Department, it's 60/40.
60 going where?
60 going to the Police Department.
Okay.
And 40 going to the DA's office. And with other entities, it's commensurate with the involvement of the entity and the investigation or actions that resulted in the seizure.
Well, I would then assume that you would project lower forfeiture revenues going forward? Yes. Small amounts of cash, and I might use a threshold of about $50, is that continuing? Oh, not $50, $500, is that continuing or?
It depends on the case. The filing of a petition isn't an expensive proposition, but sometimes litigating those matters is an expensive proposition. So, a determination is made based on those factors.
And you touched on it, but I just want to get a more definitive answer. Do you plan to continue forfeiting forfeiture property from people who have not been convicted of crime, the third-party entities, the parents, grandparents, brother and sister of someone who has been?
It always hurts when you say grandparents.
Well, it does.
But the fact is that if those people are complicit, or they allow their property to be used to facilitate a drug crime, then that property is subject to being forfeited.
And what's your definition of allowed? I mean?
Well, I think that's where there is an opportunity for movement in terms of reforming forfeiture. We've even talked about a standard that would cause us to have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that someone was not an innocent owner. At this point, it's by preponderance.
And ACLU has a report that shows 71% of the innocent or third-party victims who lose cash through forfeiture are African-Americans.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I would think that the numbers are probably consistent with the number of people who are arrested for drug offenses. And also, unfortunately, those numbers are consistent with the number of people who are the victims of violent crime.
And I have one additional question. The state legislature, and I think you alluded to that, is considering dramatically curbing the authority to conduct civil asset forfeiture. Do you have a stance on that and why?
I think it would be the biggest mistake we could make. If you think about a crack house and what happens to a community where a crack house exists, and if you think about just arresting people and never doing anything about the situs of the operation, then what you're talking about is perpetuating that activity without making a dent in the crime that's the source of all the violence that makes property values go down. I believe that if you look at the history of asset forfeiture and consider where we would be if we hadn't taken properties, this city would have gone to hell in a handbasket.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Just fine. Good to see you and thank you for all that both of you do, all three of you do. We're very, very grateful. I never miss fights, but I missed this one, so I'm glad I did.
Well, your husband was a great boxer.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I've been asked about victim-witness services. Do all, and are they all judged by the same standards and do they all get the same funding? Because some areas, they seem to work hard and some people don't hear from them.
Well, so, our office is the primary funder for geographic-based victim service organizations throughout the city. And so, you know, they do a tremendous job, I think, serving the victims when they come to court. It's a very difficult job, and they provide a lot of...
We need them.
We need them. And so, if your question is, is there a varying range, you know, does one provide better services than the other, that's quite possible. We have a very rigorous review every year. John Delaney, who is the deputy of my trial division, is here. He and Tammy Levin, who is in charge of victim services in our office, lead a committee that reviews all the applications. And I'm very confident in the review that we give. There are a lot of organizations that I wish we could fund. I wish we could give money to the mothers, you know, who have lost children.
Mothers in charge.
Right, mothers in charge and Dorothy Johnson Spate. Right, I wish we could give money to a lot of great organizations, but we have a limited budget. But the majority of our budget that goes towards something other than salaries of our office goes towards funding those organizations. And those organizations do a Herculean job with the tasks that they have.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up if I get any other questions. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up on some other quick questions. Earlier, we were talking with the First Judicial District, and they're talking about creating a First Judicial District kind of elder center, and they anticipate a soft rollout sometime in the early to midsummer and hopefully have it fully up and running by the fall. I know, and from my understanding in your office, you also have an elder, a district attorney, an ADA that's specifically designated to work on elder issues. I think that was Ms. Nixon.
Yes. So, our Family Violence and Sexual Assault Unit handles the majority of cases in which family members, and unfortunately, in Philadelphia, the majority of people that commit crimes against the elderly are family members. Just like 90% of the people that commit sexual offenses against children are known to the family members. Yes, but Ms. Nixon handles the majority of the economic cases that are a result of elder abuse. And we go out and provide a lot of support to community groups and ones that come out and talk to them as well. And we look forward to working with the First Judicial District in the rollout of this facility.
Well, one of the reasons I wanted to bring that up during this budget hearing, I know Councilman Taunberg and I, he is the chair of the council committee on aging, I'm the vice chair, and we've been discussing having conversations and having hearings in the fall regarding financial fraud issues, especially in reference to seniors, or as my dad would say, seasoned citizens. We've had conversations with AARP. I just learned about First Judicial District and their elder unit, as well as, well, hopefully we can work with the district attorney's office in that regard when we have these hearings and really get the word out. Because one of the things that AARP does is have telephone town hall meetings for those who are seniors that have mobility issues, and we hope to use that technology in our hearings possibly in the fall.
Right. And the majority of those crimes, Councilman, are various forms of identity theft, where people prey on seniors' honesty. And like my mother, you know, people call my mother soliciting her, and she's so wanting to talk, they end up hanging up on her. Right? But people will call and get information from seniors, and we all, we tell them not to give anyone your age, your date of birth, your social security number, your driver's license over the telephone. But majority of those people are victims of identity theft, where people then get that information and then use it. Or people will send someone a credit card, a pre-approved credit card, and the senior citizen or the seasoned citizen doesn't want it, but doesn't know that they should shred it before they put it into the trash. And often dumpster divers get those, call in the 1-800 number, and then go on a shopping spree at the, you know, King of Prussia Mall, and that person's left with the deteriorated, the deleterious, you know, bank account, credit card, and credit score.
Also, in one of my previous capacities, I was a board chair for Senator Park, and recently Senator Park received a contract from Philadelphia Corporation of Aging to serve as an ombudsman for various senior centers in both Northwest and Northeast Philadelphia to let the members of those senior centers know that you have a third-party entity you can reach out to in reference to any type of abuse that you may be having, both at home or at that senior center. Has your office in that unit worked with any of the ombudsmen that represent the city of Philadelphia, where they get information in reference to abuse? And some of the abuse may rise to the level of criminal. Have you had any contact with them at all?
Well, I believe that, again, Ms. Nixon, that Vernon Price, who does government and community relations for our office, Ms. Monique Evans Westcott, and representatives of our various community action centers, our community outreach team, which is led by Deputy District Attorney Anne Pontario, do reach out to all those various entities for educational purposes and to gather information if necessary for us to prosecute.
And my last question, it kind of reflects on a follow-up to the hearings that Councilman Johnson-Jones had regarding youth violence, special gun violence. And I know there's been a lot of litigation over the years, both former Councilwoman Donna Ray Miller, Council President Clark has also been involved in litigation in reference to trying to address through legal means the issues of guns in the city of Philadelphia and also the Commonwealth to some degree. Considering the newer makeup of the court, I'm talking to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, is there any avenues that could possibly be taken in that regard that you can think of?
Well, one, I want to thank Councilman Clark for the introduction of legislation that would talk about, of course, locking guns and keeping the ammunition safe. But again, state law pursuant to the Constitution, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, preempts municipalities' legal, you know, ordinances. And so, I think that, and I would support, I know you'll be hearing from the city solicitor Sosi Talante soon, I support the Law Department's efforts to, you know, track that legislation and to enforce it as a code of violation, but we cannot include it with a criminal charge for purposes of, you know, charging someone with felonies and misdemeanors. But I clearly support the effort and look forward to working with the council president. And I'm going to try to find a way to buy as many gun locks as possible so that maybe we can give them away to as many citizens as possible, so we don't have the horrific tragedy that we do of young folks finding mom or mom's boyfriend's gun and shooting a sibling.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, I wanted to follow up on Councilman Jones's concern about victims and witnesses. Could you clarify, this is just a very quick question, but could you clarify that the funding for the victim-witness agencies will stay the same, stable, for the coming year?
Yes. So, our funding for the community-based victim service organizations will remain the same.
Okay, great. Thank you for confirming that. We've also been really focused on looking at outcomes for some of the system-involved youth, as well as a number of youth homeless issues, and particularly interested also in evaluating outcomes by contract and by provider. And would love to be able to partner with you on some of these relevant initiatives and with your office. But I was curious about whether, in your work with placement and youth delinquency, whether any folks in your office have talked about how to ensure that the programs that we use are effective in achieving our goals, and in particular, reviewing some of these providers based on some of the outcomes that they get, and whether DA's know, for example, which youth might, you know, are repeat offenders, for example, or come out and continue to have issues after being in the care of some of these placement providers.
Thank you. And I think it's important to recognize that, again, we're very thankful to have a great partnership with Dr. Height. I go to approximately one or two schools a week to talk to middle school students and elementary school students about staying in school and about bullying. I think bullying is a great way to begin a conversation with kids about crime prevention, about conflict resolution, and about keeping them out of the criminal justice system. I'm very thankful, as a result of the leadership of George Mosey, that our office now files juvenile petitions less than 2/3 of the numbers that we did in the past. But I'm going to ask George to follow up and give you a little more detail, but we're trying to do as much as we can. We try to get federal grants so that we can use empirical data and analyze what we do at the district attorney's office in conjunction with analyzing what other providers do. And so, we're constantly trying to do that. But I would like George to answer, as I said, he was a deputy of our juvenile division. He can talk to you about those providers and what we're doing. George?
So, prosecutors in our office are required to stay with the case from its inception to the end. That means that anytime a young person is placed, there will be review hearings, and we have a prosecutor present for each and every one of those review hearings. What's important is that we have continuity, so that every prosecutor who's handling a review hearing knows what happened before that. So, we require that these agencies provide reports. Now, in conjunction with the Department of Human Services, we make sure that the reports indicate that the youth has been receiving the services that the agency promised it would give. What we do with the Department of Human Services and other stakeholders in juvenile justice is convene meetings, and those meetings are appropriately called the Court and Community Services Providers Meetings, to review these providers, to make sure that they're holding up their end of the bargain. If they're not, then we'll cut off referrals.
Yes. So, for clarity, one of the issues that we're trying to understand a little bit better is not just that the providers actually fulfill the contracted services, because otherwise that would clearly make them ineligible, but to try and assess in some way the quality of some of these providers, and that there's been a little bit of concern on my part in particular about one provider, specifically Mid-Atlantic, and what its outcomes have been for young people and its treatment of young people in their care. And DHS has... And DHS has made some indication that they have some level of understanding about what outcomes might look like, but it's not clear whether they share it with the different areas. And your department in particular would be able to track some of these youth, particularly if they do repeat offenses or have other kinds of issues, they'll come under you. And I guess part of it is being able to work with different agencies to be able to re-track and be able to do a good assessment of the types of providers that we're doing. These are expensive, out-of-state placements where young people go away from their families. And we want to make sure and ensure that the outcomes that these providers have are the kinds of quality outcomes that we want to see. So, would just like to be able to continue this conversation with your office on that level.
But I have to say that whenever you're talking about outcomes in juvenile justice that relate to what happens after somebody goes into placement, remember that aftercare and reentry is critical. And so, before you put all the blame on the placement facility, make sure that we had adequate reentry programming, because that's where we sometimes go wrong. And it would be unfair to blame the negative outcome on the placement facility.
Yeah. Well, I mean, those are things that we need to review and take a look at in terms of assessing whether those contracts fulfill all the mission that they need to be doing as well. And I think that that's a big gray area, but would love to be able to work with your office on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other questions for the district attorney before we take a break? I just want to say a couple of things quick before we end this hearing here. You know, in regards to the conversation and your attention to the seniors and being victimized in many, many different ways, intimidation, being, you know, impersonations, you know, bank fraud, I mean, it's horrendous. And I think it's a disgrace, all right, that seniors have to be fearful and that we have to continue to sharpen our tools as, you know, the criminals use their technology to, you know, further victimize, you know, the general public and the most vulnerable, which are seniors. So, you know, I would love to work with your office and figure out ways how to elevate a certain, at a certain threshold, a victim, a senior victim of crime, be elevated to a hate crime here in the city of Philadelphia. So, I'd look forward to having those conversations in the future. I want to thank you and your team for being here and answering, you know, some uncomfortable and tough questions, but I thought it was very thorough and, you know, appreciate your several hours here in our chambers.
Thank you. Council, I would like to thank you and all the members of council. I want to thank Council President Clark for his ongoing partnership with us to keep the city safe. And again, while my name is on the letterhead, on the windows at our office, I have a small role to play at our office. I really want to thank, again, the 600 men and women that work in our office, that do the hard work every day. And for my preparation for today's testimony, I want to specifically thank Doreen Rooney, who is our chief financial officer, and Greg Rowe. But thank you very much for this opportunity.
Great. Thank you and thank you all. I want to thank the court reporter for her extended time here without a break. With that, we, the committee, the whole, will go on recess until 2:30. Thank you as much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.